...it up and we just kind of buzzed through it a little bit last week, just to look at it. Everything goes back to definitions for really taking a look at what you're talking about. Whenever anything's questionable or whatever, first thing we go back to the definitions. Shall's a mandatory term, and if there isn't a definition, then we just use the ordinary means that you'd find out in a dictionary. A budding property, oops. Ah, I can scroll that. Butting would be the physically connected one lot to another, that would be the butter, or directly across the street. Accessory use, accessory structure, that's something incidental to the primary use. We usually think accessory, buildings, garages, sheds, things like that. Accessory use may be a primary dwelling unit, but they have a home occupation. They're running, you know, some sort of business out of there as well, too. Agreed party, that's going to be somebody that usually write title or interest to be part of that. Christina, could you? Dennis is on it. Thank you, Dennis. Agricultural, that pops its head up quite a bit all the time. Plants, animals, things like that. We had an issue a couple of years ago, goats and chickens in the shoreline zone, and all of a sudden goats become pets nowadays, things like that. Maine's big on agricultural. You say the word agricultural and the state will back them 100%. Alteration, that's just changing. Auto service station, we had changed this a few years ago in zoning. Somebody was trying to do an automotive repair facility, which is next one down, wasn't allowed in the zone. Planning board thought it was a good idea that we have some mechanics in town that can work on vehicles, and it takes time to go through. You guys, I think it's a good idea, write up an ordinance, get it approved at town meeting, figure out what zones you want. But that's one of the biggest thing you guys do is adjust the land use chart to say, we need more of this business, we need more of this type of stuff, and get it to be allowed use, because if it's not a permitted use, then it's not a use that's allowed. It's simple things such as childcare facility versus child daycare. It's going to restrict the amount of people, the size of the facility, things like that. Cluster subdivision, the planning board has always pushed these in the past, at least the 25 years I've been here. That would be if you've got a 50-acre subdivision, everybody lives in five acres on half-acre lots, and then we, the remaining 45 acres would be like a conservation type easement. Because as we break off these five-acre lots for everybody to be on, this sprawl happens, and now the natural pot of the land for the animals has all disappeared. But if we can, and the developers love it because the roads are shorter, the infrastructure is shorter. One of the last ones we did was plantation way off a nasen. At first, the developer thought, yeah, I think it was a 3,000-foot road, but once we looked at the cluster, shrunk it down to 1,000, maybe even less than that. They loved the idea, and it really came out to be a nice little community for people with the kids growing up. Conditional uses, that's one of the big thing you guys are doing, that's going to be an allowed use. You guys review it. Most times, the people will tell us the conditions they want, hours of operation, how many employees, no hazardous waste. And most of the conditions you guys apply to the conditional use permit is basically what the applicant told you. Very seldom will go outside beyond that there. The permit itself would be, have the conditions on it as well. Conforming use, that's a use that complies with the ordinance itself. Dimensional requirements, that's going to be the setback, lot area, shore, frontage. One of the big thing for Acton's lot coverage, the maximum you can cover your lot with a non-vegetated areas, 20%, that's driveways, building, beaches, walk paths. Not a big deal if you've got three or five acres, but when you talk, look at some of these shoreline zoning lots, they're 50 by 100, 5,000 square feet. That's the minimum size we require for a campground now for their lots on a campground. So it's pretty tough with these shoreline zoning lots. Some of you guys may even live on some, that as you see these lots, 50 by 100, and you've got house after house after house, and you're trying to fit wells and septics, and you guys will deal with it with relocations. And a lot of times, as you go through the comprehensive plan or some subdivision regs, you'll see city water, city sewer mentioned. The documents were from a boilerplate from Southern Maine Regional Planning helping us or something, but when we laugh at city water, city sewer, you look at some of these roads and you could see, yeah, I could see, because as soon as people don't have clean drinking water, the state will come in and mandate that you're putting in some sort of a sewage treatment for these people. The districts, those are the different zones we have where it used to be just shoreline resource protection, Little Ospe, same as shoreline, and general, everybody else is general purpose. I think 2008 or '10, we expanded to critical rural, rural, three different commercial zones, and several other zones as well, too, which starts defining, the board's really looking at, these lots on this side of town, we want this type of use, we want these to be rural, we want these to be five-acre lots, and the village zone, which we're in here, I think we can drop down to 10,000 square feet for lots in this zone, but it would need city water, city sewage. So there's a lot into all that. Multi-family dwellings, when you've got three or more, you get into subdivision law, and you look at a multi-family building, they actually consider that part of a subdivision, especially on the commercial side. Expansion, allow, enlargement of a structure, you're just increasing floor area, volumes, decks, things like that. Thing I was looking at this is when these things get added as notes, these really aren't part of the ordinance itself. If we end up in court, the judge will kick this note out. It's actually just a guidance to set you somewheres. So over time, we're trying to just, if it's important enough, we'll put it in the regulation. If it's not, then we're not too concerned. We know it has no standing with us. So the first one, expansion, enlargement of a structure, the part that gets more confusing is really is when you're looking at the use, what use they have, especially if it's a regulated use now, but they started that use before the zoning went into effect. And usually, first thing I go back is zoning came into effect in 1974, but every time it changes. So you could look at something and say, that's not a legal use, but then we look back and say, they were doing that before the rule went into effect, and it could have been zoning that was changed last year or 2008. So you really have to look at the use and say, were they doing that before the use was prohibited? And then it would be a legal existing, non-conforming use. Forested wetlands, I think we touched base a little bit on resource protection last year, last week. The state looks at resource protection of 10 acres of open wetlands. Truly, that is resource protection. The town of Acton got more stringent in 2011. They look at forested wetlands greater than two acres. So you're thinking resource protection, the ducks swimming around out there, it's really not. It's just some really good type of loomy soil that's vegetated up, and you can create wetlands pretty easy with a forest activity. The skid that turns just right, the water drains down, and all of a sudden, there's a vernal pool or something over time. You can create wetlands very easily. We've got a couple of issues where the people are telling us those are wetlands that they're working in, and we'll tell them, it's not jurisdictional wetlands, it's really land that's wet. So if it doesn't meet the criteria for resource protection or wetlands, the state will allow you to fill in almost 5,000 square feet of wetlands if you're not in the shoreline zone, no permits needed whatsoever, which makes it impossible for us to track. We can never track that, because you can do it without permitting. Foundation, that's anything that meets the building code. There are straw foundations, hay foundations, cordwood houses, there's all types of crazy things out there. The big thing for you guys is usually in these relocations, we had one last week that had a good foundation, I think we had two, we had the manufactured home on the slab that had a foundation, so something you guys will look at. Usually, if the people are trying to tell me they want to build on that house in that same location because the foundation is so good, we'll get a report from a structural engineer telling us that that foundation is good. We've allowed it in the past, and then the next thing you know, the foundation's not good enough, and they want to put a new one in, too. Functionally dependent water uses, we get into that with the boathouses. The boathouses we see are not functionally dependent water uses, they're shed down on the water is how the state looks at it. The functionally dependent water use would be more of a commercial boathouse and things like that. The recreational doesn't really apply to that. So we'll probably get into some relocation on the boathouses, but once we've talked with them, they try to just maintain them. If they mean, if they remove more than 50% of the value, they come through you guys for a relocation. So they know to just maintain as much as they can every year and try to keep what they got. Otherwise, if they want to demo and rebuild the boathouse, you guys would more than likely relocate that 100 feet away from the water, as far back from the water as you could, and if they've got a boathouse, they don't want to do that. Great pond, we've got several in town, greater than 10, or if it's artificially created, then it's greater than 30 acres. Ground cover, we'll see that in our vegetation plans. We're always looking at the trees, but it's the small vegetation area and the duff layer and all that that holds back. We'll get into that with some of our violations where they clear cut the waterfront lots, and they've got to bring back the duff layer and everything. Growth permits, a lot of you guys may know, we only allow 35 new homes a year and seasonal conversions, it's a combination of the two. We hit it a couple of years ago, I think we were close last year, but didn't. This year, I think we'll hit them, even though we had the, things were quiet for three months during the COVID. I think they were saying on the news, it's unprecedented right now, the construction in the real estate market. Height of structure, we're a max of 35 feet here in town, and that's average grade. We take the high and the low, average them together, and that makes a very, very tall house, that's for sure. Home occupations, we'll look at that more and more as time goes on, allowing more of that, especially now. I'm usually not too concerned if somebody's just working from home on their computer and things like that, we don't look at that. It's really people that are getting deliveries from UPS, FedEx several times a day, multiple employees. Well, the board was looking at expanding this and trying to get into the contractor yards, because home occupation is clearly incidental. You drive by it, and all you see is a sign out front, you don't notice a lot of stuff out there, but we'll have to really get into that. I don't know if it's this year or next, because we need the contractors for sure, but they definitely don't meet the home occupation level, and it's something we don't want to go through a whole conditional use for a lot of it, too. The impervious surfaces, that's similar to the non-vegetated area. More of the commercial stuff, not in town yet, but we're starting to see where they're trying to do pervious paving and allowing water to go through a lot of the parking lots and the concrete and things like that. Increasing and nonconformity of a structure, and that's something where you'd be getting closer to wetlands and increasing lot coverage and things like that. Usually, when we see a project come in, relocation, similar to a couple last week, they're 30% of lot coverage, we're only supposed to be 20, they're already 30. And again, we try to document that it's legally existing like that, and through the process, we just try to get them to vegetate and learn to how to mitigate the stormwater through the process and go from there. Individual private campsites, we've got a lot of those in town, and we'll encourage it, somebody with an RV, as long as, our big thing is just getting a septic on site, then we'll establish them a street address, well, water, power, sewer, and when you get into the RV ordinance, that'll really dictate the conditions that they're by. One of the issues we had with the animal rescue league down here is the maintenance facility was not in the zone that the rest of the building was in, and the board was struggling, struggling over the maintenance part of it, and kennels was not allowed in that zone. They were doing it, but it was just a maintenance facility. The board went, looked at the definition of kennels, and said that maintenance facility really isn't part of that, although it was part of the whole use, and they were good with allowing some of that use to be outside of that one zone. Lot area, when we're doing the calculations on lot area, anything under a road or underneath high water marks of water body, upland edge of wetlands, that doesn't count as the lot area. So if somebody's got a two-acre lot, but yet there's a road that's cutting into some of that, that lot probably isn't big enough. The lot coverage, we talked about that a little bit, the maximum we have is 20%, and that's non-vegetated. So a lot of times, people just focus on the buildings and things like that, but it's just if it's not vegetated, it's not it. Mineral extraction, calculated on a 12-month, we've got a lot of beautiful gravel in town, and you guys must see it leave truck after truck after truck all day long. That's something that doesn't grow back like the trees, so, and usually with the mineral extraction, it's just the neighbors that are working around the commercial use next door to it. Net residential density, that's calculations on the amount of houses per acreage in the usable area, residential, same thing. Nonconforming lot, that's a lot of record that was established legally existing and meets all the dimensional requirements with it, or doesn't. Nonconforming structures, you guys are starting to deal with those quite a bit. It just doesn't meet, assuming, again, legal existing, nonconforming structure. It was constructed legally, and quite often, either there wasn't any setbacks at the time or setbacks have changed since then. So it was legally existing, and you guys, more than likely on the relocation, you just try to make it fit as best as practical. Nonconforming use, that's again, allowed solely because it was lawful in existence at the time of the ordinance, and again, it started in '74, but it changes every year. Sometimes it changed twice a year. So you really have to look at the use, when it started, and what was in effect at the time of it. Normal high water line, you guys will deal with that quite a bit. That's really where the water changes to rock and the vegetation, you can usually see it. It's really easy on a retaining wall or rocky shoreline. It gets much tougher when somebody's got a beach to find out where that high water line is, because that's where the 100-foot setback will come from, be measured from, and quite often, we'll have a survey already documented for you guys, and then once they build it, we'll have the survey document that it meets what you guys told them to be. Parking spaces, couple hundred square feet apiece. Piers and docks, this is one of the proposals for changing at the town meeting. Temporarily, less than seven months, permanence, more than seven months. And you can drive around and see, there's a lot of docks that are in year-round, and there's a lot that aren't temporary. The temporary ones are just impossible for us to chase, we can't chase them. Once we get into the dock ordinance, you'll realize, most of the docks that you see out there are all in violation. Resource protection, that's a favorite zone. We just made blue for anything shoreline-related. Road, that's usually a good base to start with, you know, is it a road? Does it meet the definition? Because if somebody's trying to divide the land on an existing road, and we're starting to see more development on hebo, highbo, peck, there's some of the others that are barely passable, but it's going to meet the definition of a road. So we just try to get them to upgrade that road as best as practical, with the intention of fire apparatus. If there's an issue out there, it doesn't take much, and you have $2 or $3 million worth of fire equipment on a road that's barely passable in the summer, never mind the winter. So we usually try to get those upgraded as best as practical. Seasonal use, less than seven months in a calendar year. We have a lot of seasonal conversions, they convert the seasonal to year-round. Permits are required for that, not a lot of people get them, but. Setback, that's going to be the nearest horizontal distance from the lot line, the high water, however we're doing that. Some of that's basic stuff, a lot of you guys may know, but if not, like I said, whenever it's a question, go straight to the ordinance, and there's usually a definition. Sometimes it's old and outdated, but at least it's in there. Shoreline zone, that's going to be a 250-foot buffer around the great ponds and 75 from something that's a stream, and that stream's a perfect one to define, you know, what is a stream? Then you just go down to stream and look, it's the outlet from a great pond, all the confluence of two of the perennial streams coming together. Usually, we just go to the USGS maps and see if it's on there for us. Structure, a lot of people always say, you know, it's just, it's temporary, it's a temporary shed, temporary deck, or something like that. Structure's a structure, anything constructed or erected in a fixed location, excluding fences, we exempt fences here. Includes decks, patios, patio's a big one. Satellite dishes were big in the 80s, because those things were six-foot diameters, everyone was putting them down by the water. Then it got into hot tubs, we had a lot of hot tubs down by the water. Fire pits seem to be the big ones now. Simple little fire pit on our side, we're not really too concerned, but that simple fire pit all of a sudden turns into a huge patio pretty quickly. Subdivision, you guys will have a better definition of this once we get into the subdivision books. Three or more lots created in a five-year period, or re-division of a subdivision. Main law allows some landowners to break a lot off every five years, and then they're exempt from subdivision, or they can gift it. If they got three or four kids, they can break four lots off, give them to the kid, sell the one that was their one they can do every five years. So there's a lot you can do in subdivision without you guys being involved whatsoever, and at the very end of the law for subdivision, it says if you're trying to circumvent the subdivision law, then it's all illegal, but at the end of the day, that's all you're trying to do is use the regulations to your benefits, and you just write up some deeds on your kitchen table and go record them at the registry, and we never know until somebody comes in for a permit, and then we'll track down to see if it's legal or not legal. Miners, three division or fewer, and major is four or more. Substantial start, 30%, we don't really give that. Substantially completed. Outside the shoreline zone, inside the shoreline zone, you see that quite a bit, and a lot of times, I think, what we did, we did ADU units, additional dwelling units, which we put into the ordinance a couple of years ago, I think, and we didn't want to go into the shoreline zone with it, because anything we do in the shoreline zone has to go through the commissioner, the DEP, and they look at it a lot differently and with a lot more of it, but we, we want the ADUs, so we keep them out of the shoreline zone versus the inside. So you'll see a couple of different regulations for that there. Subsurface drainage, septic system, that's all we'll see in here. Timber harvesting, we used to have a ton of regulations for timber harvesting, we gave that all back to the state, and we'll let the Forest Service be able to do that. It's quite a bit to be able to count the, calculate the basal area and do the calculations for that. So any issues we have with timber harvesting, we call the Forest Service, they come in, take a look at it, and it's amazing what you have to do to create a violation for the state of Maine, because we have the same rules in Southern Maine as they do in Northern Maine, all the same rules for timber harvesting. And again, the timber industry has a huge lobbyist to help them with their laws getting through. Tributary stream, we talked about.
Excuse me. Why is there a change to take that definition out? What would spawn the cause change then?
So we've tried three or four years to get into compliance with the state, and every year, we talk to somebody new, and they kick it back out. I'd have to look at what that change was, I think it's roads or something. It was a definition of roads, and the state's telling us just, if it has the word timber, get rid of it. Because otherwise, they'll come back and say, your ordinance is not in compliance with the state rules, and they won't accept it. The timber harvesting, we have to have signed off by the state, anything with shoreline zoning, we, the state signs off, which is tough, because they won't look at it until town meetings approved it, and then they'll look at it and say, well, you gotta do this, this, and this. So then we come back another year. And it's hard as personnel's change up there, they have, just like me, it's my job to interpret this, and if you have somebody sitting here differently tomorrow, they can interpret it differently. So we have the same issues at the state level, too. Upland edge of a wetland, that's just basically where the water and the vegetation starts, and we would start picking up from there. Red the variances, that would be the zoning board of appeals. If you need a variance from this ordinance, you need to go through the zoning board of appeals to, to get a variance, and we'll have somebody, the garage doesn't fit, so they're like, well, I'll just go get a variance. You really have to show that it's a financial hardship not created by that person, and it's uncharacteristic for the neighborhoods, so it's almost impossible to meet the four criterias for a variance, or four or five criterias for a variance. And our zoning board hasn't granted one for many, many years. If you physically have a lot that you can't build a house on, then they'll find room for you, but they won't reduce the 100-foot setback for them, and, you know, the 28 by 38, they may think a 24 by 24 is just fine, too, so. Variances are almost impossible to get. Vegetation, trees, it's the shrubs and the ground cover that comes in with that vegetation, too. Volume of the structure, when we're looking at these 30% expansions, two ways it's calculated, one is floor area, the other is cubic, and it's really, really hard when we're talking to a homeowner and tell them, they have to go figure out the volume of their structure, and they've got a cape with doghouse dormers and a doghouse full shed dormer on the back, it's, we usually recommend a ninth grader, go find a ninth grader, one of your, one of your grandkids, they'll love this project. The state came up with another set of guidelines, which is in chapter 1,000, to get rid of this volumes thing. They set a setback of nothing happens within 25 feet of the water, 25 to, I think, 75, you can have 800 square feet on the ground, including sheds and garages and houses, and it can only be 20 feet tall, something like that. 75 to 100, you can get 1,500, and we've looked at it for years, and we've never seen it help anybody whatsoever. We've seen other towns adopt it, and the builders are telling us, it's so restrictive, you can't do anything. So prior boards have looked not to touch that at all and leave it as is for now. When the state comes out with those chapter 1,000s, and usually, there's a mandatory date, we have to adopt it and come into conformance with it. They've never given us a date for this last round of stuff, so we're just going as is. Water body, we're pretty good on that, water's pond streams, fresh water. Two or more continuous acres. Wildlife habitat, so one of the things that kicks you into resource protection is you've got significant waterfowl habitat area as defined with a conservation plan, and as you guys get into some subdivision plans, all of a sudden, you'll notice, we'll have deer yachting habitat areas and stuff. We try not to make that public, because that's where everyone will go hunting next year. The significant wildlife for the wedding birds and habitat, the state pulled that out as a requirement, as being in resource protection. We still got a bunch of areas in it, because we've never pulled it out, but if we ever get back into looking at resource protection, that would be something to possibly reduce on. Front yard, that's always gets confusing, is the waterfront the front, or is it the roadside? So you've got your different setbacks, front, rear, side, year-round use, you're there seven months a year, that may contradict what registrar voters may have or something like that, but hopefully, that's in conflict with, that doesn't have a conflict with that. So the definitions are always, we always go back to the definitions, and whenever something does, that's just the first thing to always go back through. Article four gets into the land use district, now we're really starting to talk about the requirements for it. Again, blue, we just highlighted as all the resource protection, does it show up there? Does that screen look fuzzy, or is it all right with you guys? Yeah, we know that, that's why we put you in the back, Dennis. Currently developed, and so resource protection meets these guidelines, and there's exceptions always, as anything, and it's just if it's developed already, it doesn't. So we've only got a few areas, I think maybe five or six, that are in the shoreline zone with more than 1,000 feet of undeveloped, and they're just looking at primary structure, every 500 would kick it back out. So definition, all lands areas within 250 feet, horizontal distance, upland edge of wetlands associated with great ponds, moderate to high value of high water fowl. So that's the area the state has kicked out, we've just never pulled that out of that. I don't know what it would do to the maps to change or not. Non-forested wedding continues with a great pond. Surface elevations below the water, so water's flowing into it, not out of it, and considered part of the great pond. Flood plain, we really don't have a lot of flood plain, but a lot of Great East is in flood zones, but our maps are so old and so outdated, we've been told for over 20 years the new maps are coming, but we haven't gotten them yet. They're having a lot of problems with the seacoast area. But if you look at Great East, we grabbed the data from the New Hampshire side, there's a much better. East, we grabbed the data from the New Hampshire side. There's a much better, they're flat over there. We've got, a lot of our shoreline is, you know, 100 steps to get down to the lake, and the people are in the flood zones for it. That means they have to get flood insurance, which is extremely expensive. But they'll go through a process with a letter of map amendment, an update FEMA. They have to have a surveyor come out and check the elevation of the lake off the benchmarks the state have put in, and then confirm that the lowest living area is greater than a foot above it. And they're in the flood zone still, but yet they don't need the flood insurance. So that's a tough one to get around on FEMA. So we usually have that as an issue with our relocation, when we're telling them they have to do this and do that. And we limit their elevation, but yet FEMA's telling them they want a little higher. That only comes up once every few years. So again, these are all definitions for RP. Land areas, two or more continuous undeveloped acres in the shoreline zone with sustained steep slopes of 20% or greater. No buffers required around those. And measuring that becomes extremely difficult. The mapping we use are 20-foot contours on our map. So we would have the applicant or whoever supply us with either two-foot or five-foot contour maps to go through things. Wetlands, two or more continuous acres associated with the buffers. So this is totally unique to act. And with the size of our wetland dictates how big the buffer is around it. So if we've got a two-acre wetland, then it's a 50-foot buffer. The state doesn't care until you've got a 10-acre wetland, and then that's a 250 buffer. So that's totally unique to act. Land associated with the rivers, severe bank erosion, dimensional requirements. Nothing in resource protection can be used as a part of a lot. So if somebody's got a bunch of land that has RP, that gets subtracted from the lot area. So we go from resource, which is the most restringent, which nobody can really do much in it, which creates a lot of time for us because they do stuff in it. Now we can go into the shoreline zone, which is the intent of that, or the purpose, control water pollution, aquatic life, conserve the shore coverage, and just keep the water quality as high as practical. Undeveloped on the shoreline area, provide a maximum protection as we can for the water resource. Minimize the use for flooding. Again, Salmon Falls River and the Little Ospey River are our two main areas that have flood, areas of flood zone in it. And Little Ospey's all in resource protection, so we won't deal with that very much. Encourage open space, agriculture and recreation, that's tough in the shoreline zone. Great Pond, we've been through the other definitions. There's a subdefinition that's usually in these as well, which prior boards used to love putting things in four or five different spots so people can find them. But then when we go to change something, we change the definition, then we forget to pick it up here. Or we change something in here and forget to do it in the definition. And then we end up with conflict. So it's great if we can just keep it as clean and simple as practical. Dimensional requirements in the shoreline zone, we're looking at two acres, 250 feet of frontage per dwelling unit. Road frontage and shore frontage is the same on that. Commercial, same acreage, and just more road frontage and shore frontage. We have a lot of spots, if you look at the tax maps, and you guys may even have them around your houses, you've got that right-of-way down the street. It's a 10-foot wide right-of-way, and there's 10 people using it. And the, back in the 30s or 40s, people were just granted the use of the right-of-ways. And it really doesn't say, "Are they allowed to have a dock? Can they maintain it? Can they cut the trees? Can they do?" You know? So it's really, really tough. So this came in, it was probably over 20 years ago, if not longer. If shore front privileges are conveyed to a lot not having the shore front privileges, the grantor has to have a full-size lot. So you'd have to have the two acres and the 250. And every time you grant a right-of-way to it, then you'd add 25 feet to it and keep adding. That way, there you don't have these little 50-foot wide right-of-ways where people can't even park a car or anything like that. Structural, so the setbacks, 100 feet from the water, 75 feet from streams, wetlands. Basically, if it's on the map, the map is what we use as our main guideline. We go to that all the time, just luck to see. We'll do the overlay for the shoreline zone or the streams, and then that'll tell us if there's setbacks for that. Front setback, 75 feet, and it's from the center of the right-of-way. The traveled way isn't the same as the right-of-way by any means. You would think the bigger roads are all set, but I know we've had a lot of issues with West Shore Drive, which is a main road. But once they get the survey and they find out the pavement almost isn't in the right-of-way whatsoever. So it really looks odd when people are building right up to the edge of the road, but they're measuring off the center of the right-of-way. That 75 feet can be reduced to 50 feet for non-conforming lots or lots that are on private roads. Minimum side setbacks are 25 feet. That can be reduced down to 10 feet. We brought that 10 feet in probably 15 years ago or so, because we had these 50-foot lots, and you had a 25-foot setback from both sides. Everybody was just in the zoning board constantly for everything. We reduced it down to 10. The fire chief was okay. That was our really main concern, that we just didn't want the whole street to burn or something like that. But that has eliminated almost all the boards of appeals, because those are our problem tiles, those 50 by 100 lots. Maximum lot coverage, 20%, non-vegetating building structures, 75 feet. We'll see some redundancy to it. Little Ospey District, that's our Saco River Carter Commission. That's going to be Baldch Lake and Little Ospey River. That's a 500-foot setback. It was 750 for a while. We were able to change that back down to 500. So we're the same as them. We had a conflict with the two regulations, it just made it tough for us. We had a huge gravel pit that was within that district, and Three Rivers was able to work with them and get a bunch of conservation land for the Hanson Pond area and things like that. So that should be able to protect that area as well, too. Residential usage, it's given us the criteria for that. What did I jump into? Little Ospey. So zoning district for Little Ospey's, five acres. Threw me a curve there. I haven't seen that for a little bit. Frontage is 300. Shore setbacks, 100. Road setbacks, 3, road frontage, 300. 100 feet from the water. Saco River Carter Commission rules will be a lot more stringent than this. So we'll usually send people up to Saco River first. If you meet their guidelines, usually you're going to be okay with us as well, too. That's a third set of regulations in the shoreline zone that the people have to go through after or before the state and the town. 100 feet, 75, 50 setbacks. We tried to keep a lot of the regulations very similar to a lot of districts, so it didn't get to confusion. Commercial district, I thought this was A, is a service district, two acres, 250. The maps at the front of the book, you will have the legends in it to tell you which zones or what. But the website's the easiest to go to. You'd be able to blow it up with that. Setback for that is 125 feet from the center line. Sounds like it's bigger, but of course, you're coming off of Route 109, so myself, I'd want to get back much more than that anyways. Sides and rear, 50 feet. So that's much more substantial than the 10 or the 25. Lot coverage on the residential, 20% commercial. You can jump up to 50, but you've got to comply with the buffer and things like that on the bottom there. Commercial B is a low water impact, was the intention of that. Three acres, 300 feet of road frontage. Again, 125 feet, 50 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet, really similar to the other ones. The difference is going to be in the land use chart. You go back in the chart and see which uses are allowed in the different districts. Commercial C, three acres, 300 on the road, setback 75. So there's a reduction setback in that. And it's really, at the beginning of it, it's really just a small group of people that start taking the map and start coming up with these districts and things. It's the residents of the town have faith in you guys. When you go to town meeting, that you guys have looked, you had the knowledge, the research, you've gone through all those meetings. There's a reason why you guys come up with that. And quite often, the voters vote with the boards, assuming that there was a lot of intelligent discussion that went into them.
That was before you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I remember one of my first articles I had wrote and pushed for was a holding tank provision. And your wife beat me up pretty bad at town meeting. And I didn't go back for several years with any articles. I didn't realize I was going to get beat up. But she had intelligent points with it, that she was just picking it apart. Village district, that's going to be right around this area here. And we kind of talked about that lightly. Two acres, 250. Setbacks are the same, 75. We can drop it down to 50. Sides are 25. We can drop it down to 10 for the non-conforming lots. Lot coverage is very similar. Then it gets into this. If the lot is less than two acres but greater than one acre, we're reducing, reducing, reducing. And we're looking at engineered alternative community water system. It's either the sewage or the water. You've got the two issues you've got to deal with. Here, we can get down to less than one acre. Each lot of one acre is permitted, it's got to be part of a subdivision, so you just can't stop breaking things off. But you can drop down to one acre on that. Minimum lot size. Each lot that is one acre or less, yeah. So 10,000 square feet, we can drop down into this area here. We talked about it a little bit last week, and it should be something that we'd go again towards. We've got a couple of 55 and older communities. They're on the higher-end side. We really don't have anything for long-term residents that don't need that big farmhouse anymore. They're ready to sell and downsize. All they need is, you know, 1,000 square feet, small home, little tiny garage, something simple. They don't need two acres or five acres. So it's something we've been looking at in the past, and we've just got to find the right part of town, the right development, and see what needs to be changed in the ordinance to allow something like that. And I think 62 is the new 55. That's dropping down to 10,000 square foot lots, 100 feet of frontage. Setbacks are very similar to everything. Then you've got the transition zone, that's going to be the next zone out from the village area. Two acres, 250. That's the old general purpose, basically. 75, we can drop down to 50. So pretty much, a lot of the setbacks are all the same in all districts. Rural is a larger part of the town as well. Two acres, 250, 75, 50, 25, 25. Very similar, all of them are. So in the rural zone, if a subdivision's developed, there's a cluster subdivision, it's going to contain 50% of the total acreage is open space. So once we get into this net density, the engineers will do all the calculations for that and really start looking at providing larger tracts of open space. Again, the boards in the past has always pushed for the cluster. The developers are reluctant at first, but once they realize it's much better for them, less infrastructure, less road, and then the town ends up with a much larger parcel for the wildlife, for habitat, it works out much better. Critical rural, that's going to be what's left over in the rest of the town. And that's much larger acreage, and a lot less things are permitted in the critical rural. That's a five-acre zone. And it gets into the net density. And somewhere's they need a survey in here. 75 feet, 25, 10. Lot coverage is 20%. So again, anybody write a deed up and go create it and stuff. But then we have to pull out, you know, if we see something coming in, any new law created after 2008 has to have a standard survey, category one, condition three. I don't even think we even know what that means nowadays. High-intensity survey, we definitely know what that means. High-intensity soil survey by a licensed soil guy. There's no way to really enforce this until somebody comes in for permitting. Because again, you're just writing a deed on your kitchen table, or somebody's doing it for you, and you go and record it. And once the registry gets a bunch of them, they'll send them into us. Three or more lots created in a five-year period shall be in a cluster. Again, these are tough to enforce because we don't know most of it's done, if it's not a subdivision by our definitions. Mixed use zone, we've got a little bit of that. Most of it's down and coming out of Milton Mills. Two acres, 250, 75. All the setbacks are pretty much. This is similar to the village. We can drop less than two acres but greater than one acre. It's reducing some areas in there. And it'll also go, one acre or less is permitted, 10,000 square feet. We can drop down to that. And I believe it's city water, city sewer of some kind, or a community system. Aquifer protection, when they were putting that in, I was told really no regulations with it. They were just trying to identify it. But if you look at the land use chart, it does pop its head back up as far as different permitted uses and nonuses. It's usually just going to be an area that has a substantial amount of water underneath it. And you wouldn't want a junkyard in that area, automotive repair facilities, things like that. We just try to really watch what goes into those areas. Change of use of the structure of the land, it just can't have a greater adverse impact if we're changing the uses and it's coming through you guys. Performance standards, this is where we can wake up a little bit. We're past the definitions and the aimlessly rambling on. And again, a lot of this stuff that doesn't work, isn't working, it all comes back to you guys. We've had some people that are ready to get on the agenda to talk about some zoning changes and things like that. I just want to get you guys caught up to speed, a little bit more comfortable with this, so you understand where they're coming, what they're talking about, and can just, you know, when he says something, huh, we'll pull up the definition, see if he really knows what he's talking about. So once we get into Article five, performance standard, we start really looking at regulations more from it. It set the baseline with the zones, the definitions, uses, and things like that. So accessory buildings, 600 square feet, we can reduce those down to a 10-foot side setback, even if your zone is a 25-foot. So garages, sheds, things like that, we can drop that down to 10 square feet, 10 feet from side and rear setbacks. Again, this just eliminated people going to the zoning board, because you're not going to get a variance to the zoning board. And that was just wasting people's times. And God knows, you need a garage in Maine. This is a shed ordinance we put in a couple of years ago. We see it used every once in a while. So if you've got a non-conforming lot of record, only a residential structure on it, and it's not possible to place an accessory structure on it, you're allowed to have a single accessory structure, no utilities. It's a storage shed for tools. Our big thing was getting the gasoline out of the people's camps and things like that. So you're allowed to have 80 square feet of a shed, located as far away from the shoreline as possible. But it's got to meet all the other setbacks. It'd have to be 50 from the road, 10 off the sides. So you may see a shed that's, you know, 50 feet from the water, brand-new building, never had anything there before. They're using this exception here. And I think we've got a couple going in on East Shore Drive that we just permitted, so. It made sense to the board. We've probably had this in there seven, eight years ago. And it was something from the DEP. We had to get the DEP on board as well, too, because again, it's shoreline zoning. Made sense to them, and they've ended up bringing it into their Chapter 1000s and allowing everybody to do it. Again, it was just, as you see, most of the lakes now, we don't have marinas on, we can't get gas. You'll see the minivan down at the store with, you know, six or seven five-gallon cans of gasoline thrown in the back of the minivan, bringing it back to the car. So we were just looking at this hazardous, as a hazardous situation. Get it out of the camp, give them some room to store something. Again, these 5,000-square-foot lots, you don't have a lot of room for much. Freestanding stairs, that's another thing we're allowing down into the water. You need to give reasonable, safe access to the water for people. If there's no reasonable access, then we're going to do some sort of a access to the people, so it's safe for them. Retaining walls in the shoreline district, we put this in maybe five, six years ago, because everyone was screaming they needed it for erosion control. Nobody's ever used it. But we whip it out all the time. So this is a, if you have a retaining wall that's not necessary for erosion control, it needs to be 100 feet away from the water. If it's not 100 feet away from the water, then it has to comply with this, unless you're replacing the legally existing one. So the site's been altered already. No effective vegetated buffer. You've got erosion going right through the site constantly. The wall has to be at least 25 feet away- The wall has to be at least 25 feet away from the water. Is legally existing lawn there of some kind? No natural vegetation. It kind of looks like a barren site. You can just see it as wasting. They're allowing up to a 24-inch wall. So you could do two 1-foot walls, a 6-inch wall, an 18-inch wall or a 24-foot wall. Area behind the wall is revegetated, shrubs and line cover. This is what kills everybody. Gee, they don't want nothing to do. They have to establish a vegetated buffer in that 25-feet zone to create, to prevent all this water quality issues. As people need to, want to fix the erosion down at the beach, they focus at the waterfront. And we try to convince them, you've got to start up at the road, through the driveway, go past the house, all the stormwater coming off of your property. Yes, it does land at your beach, but you can't just put a wall up to your beach and thinks that solves everything. You've got to look at the whole lot itself and mitigate the water and use limited impact development. Get as much of that water into the ground as much as you can, as often as you can, and just start putting that down in. So by the time it gets to the water, it's very little whatsoever. So if you use this part of the regulation here, you're re-establishing a vegetated buffer down in the water. And it's got to be at least 15 feet wide. And people, they don't want to have vegetation down there. They're okay with lawn, but they don't want to have trees and shrubbery. Agricultural, spreading manure, sewage. Sludge was a big thing back 80s, 90s or so. And acting kind of prohibited it right off the bat, which is good because it sounds like there's a lot of sludge issues with the heavy metals that are brewing there heads up now over time. People taking the sludge, make great fertilizer, but you just don't know what's in a lot of that material. Tilling of soil, again, you say agricultural and we really have to leave people alone on a lot of that stuff there. It's just establishing 100-foot buffer away from great ponds. We really don't have true agricultural farms or anything like that. You'll see that more up as towards Freiburg, up into the rivers up in there and stuff. Conservation plan, manure. Newly established livestock and grazing, that doesn't really apply. Beach construction, we're going to send you to the DEP first and you probably won't come back. Individual private campsites, one campsite per lot and 30,000 square feet per use. So if you've got a camp on the lot already, again, we're on our 5,000-square-foot lots, and then they bring a camper in. If it's more than a week or two, it's a violation. It's 30,000 square feet per use, so. The RV ordinance back it up. Sometimes it'll contradict it too as well. Campsite needs to be more than 100 feet away from the high water. We'll have a lot of this in the resource protection, too. Only one RV per site, no structures attached to the RV. We'll allow a roof over it, except a canopy. So that gets down to interpretation as a roof or canopy. Our big thing is we're looking for, if it's safe for more than 30 days, all the requirements for residential structure need to meet, meet. Same, we're looking for a septic system. We want to see the septic system installed. Some of these are hard to chase, a lot of them. They just buy the lot, we're chasing the old owner, we've got to chase the new owner. And they're tough for us. Otherwise, we've got others that came in, got their permit, put their systems in. They have the street address and we never have any issues with them. So we go from individual private campsites to RV. And you can see over time, different board members. And nobody's an expert, went to college for planning and things like that. We just have people that are just citizens of the town. We start working on the ordinance. You can kind of see how it's been pieced year after year after year and worked, put into it. This year, we didn't get a town meeting, but we'll have one soon, hopefully. We sent in, I think it was $20,000 for you guys to have the resource of a planning company to come in and help, look at these ordinance, really start looking at it. And these people are well-educated, that's all they do. To be able to look at that and say, hey, you've got conflicts here. Hey, this is so outdated, this is in conflict with state laws. Be able to go through and help you guys out as a resource. I mean, you guys are just volunteers, so. You have good intentions to go in with things. And then it's like, oh, I didn't think of that. So we will try not to reinvent the wheel and use resources the best of our abilities. So the RV ordinance, if somebody's storing an RV on a lot, we don't care about that. It's once we see the garden hose hooked up to it and then the septic pipe comes out of it and hopefully it's going into a septic tank and just not on the ground. Usually, we'll send them a letter later part of the year and tell them just so we're not chasing it next year, too, as well. One RV on a lot, has to meet all the setbacks. They need to register if it's been there, register with the town. If it's there for seven days, you can't occupy it for more than six months. So we don't want you claiming, we don't want the school bus stopping there, claiming residency out of there. 5.5's a campground. I don't know if anybody's been to the new one right up on H Road. If you get a chance, it's great to go in and see what they've done up there. 5,000 square feet per lot. Again, these are the same lots you see around the lake, pretty much. That's the minimum size on our campgrounds now. We get probably once a month, somebody's calling, looking for a campground's allowed. Once you see, once there's a lot that goes on the market. And we've got two or three that are 40, 50 acres near the water or something. Somebody's trying to, you know, campground sounds like a great endeavor. As we got into that last one, it didn't take long for them to realize there's no difference between a campground and a subdivision. They had to have the lots delineated, the iron pipes put down. They had underground sewer, underground water, underground utilities, cable, wire. The road had to build to a standard. So really, I mean, it's kind of like a mini subdivision. 200 square feet of off-street parking, picnic table, trash can, fire receptacles, 100-foot buffers, screening, meeting the good neighbor policy. Filling, grading, earth moving. We've adjusted this and it really needs help from our planners to take a look at this, too, as well. Because it just jumps into roads as we go from filling and grading. Considerations for town roads, 50-foot easements, 24-foot surface top, 20 feet of tile. And a lot of people, as they make their roads, they're only doing two or three lots. They don't realize, they think 50 feet sounds quite a bit. But by the time you put the road in there and you've got your drainage on the side and you're bringing your utilities in that crisscross back and forth, 50 feet really isn't that wide. But it's a big swath once you go whacking it through. Roads and driveways in the shoreline zone. Again, this would just be that 250 zone or by a stream or something like that. It's 100-foot setback from the great pond, 75 from the streams. If there's no reasonable alternative for it, they can come to the planning board and you guys can reduce that down to 50 feet. And they'd have to have a good plan from somebody for stormwater mitigation and preventing sedimentation. Gravel is tough, especially if it's on any steep slope. And the reclaimed asphalt, it's just a matter of time. It all washes down over time. It's just good ditch lines and things like that. Then you put the paving in, you create higher water temperatures, too, as well. So everything's a toss-up. That's why it's great to just, if you've got somebody that doesn't mind having an engineer on board and doing the designs with that, it helps you guys out. This talks about the height of the road, the setback from the river or the lake. Most of this, I don't think you guys will get into very often. Road banks, two-to-one vertical. When we start looking at slopes and things, it'll have a two-to-one slope that's two dimensions horizontally, one meant vertically, usually feet. Two-to-one would be two feet horizontally, one feet vertical. 10% new and reconstructive roads and driveways shall be no greater than 10% for segments of, can be expanded for greater than 200 feet on that. Again, most of the roads we'll see usually comes with a subdivision. But if you've got somebody that is using the laws to their advantage versus circumventing, you can have a subdivision over time and you guys won't have much to do with it whatsoever. Empty on two, unscathed pavement. Ditch relief, it just talks about the turnouts and things. It's trying to give a little bit of guidance to somebody so they can design this stuff on their own or at least meet a minimum standard. Erosion sediment control in the shoreline zone. Now you have to be certified by the main DEP to work within the shoreline zone. Within that 250 buffer, you've got to be certified and at least understand erosion control. Most people are looking for the black silt fence that everyone we've seen for years and years and years. That's got to be one of the worst methods of erosion control because contractors will go this time of year and demo the house and set up the silt fence. And the dirt guys won't be back until April, May, June. And over that time, the wind's blown the thing down. The contractors have driven over it, rode over it, and nobody's maintaining this. So with the certification process, we require, who is in charge of the erosion control needs to sign off and just tell us who they are and give us their contact information. And it just kind of puts them on notice that they have to maintain this stuff somewhat. So most people are using what they call stump grindings. If you saw at the animal rescue league facility they're doing down the road, they had a grinder came in, they did all the stumping there, they fed it through the grinder. Now they've got these big piles of, looks like Bach malts kind, but it's very, very aggressive. I would imagine next they're going to be laying that out as their erosion control. You can't kill the stuff that's there forever until you go to pick it up. And it's just the best method there is. It just isn't practical on some sites. If somebody's got a beautiful lawn and you're working backup, you don't want to use all that because it makes it hard. So they just had a class, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday here. There was probably 10 contractors here. And where you have to be certified in the state, they'll come from all over the state once there's a class. So I didn't recognize any of the vehicles. So if you're working in the shoreline zone, you need to stabilize that site after, I thought it was 14 days, it's one week from the time. So somebody rips down a house, they've got the whole yard destroyed or something. If they're not working it every week, then they need to stabilize the site. And then that would be either with netting or blowing hay over it or something like that. Again, just so that soil with all the nutrients and phosphate in it, in that fresh soil, isn't washing into the lake if you've got a blowdown through your erosion control messings. 100-year storm is our design. Mineral exploration and extractive industry. The explorers, pretty minimal. Those are people just out digging test pits and things. We've got two or three parcels right now, they're doing some exploration on right now. And if they find the soils they're looking for, as you see, as you come out of the Boston area and you're going up through, you can see these pits that are just empty, empty, empty. They've been burnt out, they're coming up to here. We have several trucks that go to Raleigh, Mass. every day for concrete that leave town. And we've got several that go down to, oh, the Plastow area for quickcrete stuff, the bag of sand that you buy there. Permit required, that's the extractive part. Earth moving, not requiring the conditional use. Funny, most of the contractors will know the acceptance to it. They won't know the rules, but they'll know the exceptions aspects of it. And they'll try to stay under the regulation, which there's nothing wrong with that. That's what the threshold is. Occasionally, you get a little above it and then they get right back underneath it, so. Agricultural tilling, there's some exemptions on that, submissions required. So and we do have one coming in. Came in as an extractive industry and it was down the fairgrounds. They actually want to do a parking lot. The board had done a site walk, we'd done some looks. I think we're going to kick it back out. They'll come back in as a parking lot because it gets confusing. It was at a gravel pit or was it a parking lot? Two different sets of regulations, so. One of our main focusing was just for the fairgrounds to get the cars off of Route 109. I can't believe nobody's ever really been hurt there. So these are the submissions they'll be following through. And as you guys will start to know your books, you can tab them, little tabs in it and just things jump out for you. All of a sudden, gravel pit comes in, bam, you pull this up and just start looking at stuff and say, geez, I remember something. What were the contour lines supposed to be? You pull this up, five-foot contours. And you may say, yeah, we'd like two-foot contours on that. And give a justifying reasoning. Most time at the beginning, the applicant, the engineer, they're going to, whatever you guys want, they're going to do it as long as it's within reason. At the end of the day, you guys can ask for anything. And as long as the applicant agrees with it, you're all set. There becomes a point where they'll be like, yeah, that's not reasonable. And then you guys discuss it, hash it out and go from there. Performance standards. You need 100-foot buffer around these things. And again, we're still in extractive industry. Insurance, one of the big things we have is the reclamation of these. And we've always done $1,000 an acre, we'll have it at escrow. When these things get dug out, 20, 30, 50 years from now, that $1,000 probably won't mean very much at all. So, but it's something we've just, we've used as before. Topsoil, they can't be selling the loom off a site. Occasionally, they'll show me that they've got most of it reclaimed and they've got an excess of loom, then yeah, that's fine, get rid of it. But you need to be able to re-establish vegetation on the site once you're all done with it. At the end of the day, hopefully, they've got a plan for what the site will be when they're all done. Meadows, field, something. Planning board's going to limit the hour of operation. One of the big focuses is always the crushers, what the crushers are. The newer equipment that's out there now, it's so quiet, you can't even hear the things. Gavin, I moved your seat up front.
Oh, all right.
We're talking extractive industry.
Yeah.
Last season, 100 feet of public way. 12 months completion of the operation. They'll notify us when it's all said and done and re-establish the vegetation. Some of the bigger pits we've got, they'll get their bonding through the state. We used to do lines of credit. And then when everything died out, '06 or so, everybody's lines of credits. We couldn't chase anybody, we couldn't get anybody to do any of it. And it's funny how names changed on deeds so fast and we couldn't make anybody responsible for anything. But even at, like I was saying, $1,000 an acre, if you've got to supply the loom to do that, then that's going to be a lot. I'm good for a quick five-minute break or so. Let you guys get up, use the bathroom if you need to. Anybody have questions with all this good, fun information? There's a lot to it, that's for sure. How was your evening?
All been good.
Everybody behaving, back in the barn?
Yeah, for the most part.
Head count's good?
Eight. Getting some moss, washing pumpkins harvested.
Before the big rains?
Who knows what's going to happen?
Doesn't look good. I was just digging around some of my trees, getting ready to fertilize and stuff like that. And it was a good eight inches down. It was all dust. Now we're starting to look at the fire permits and the burn permits and things like that for concern. Usually, that's just a summertime thing. Yeah, it's just, we've been in one for a while. It's just a different level of what they want to call it. Severe drought, moderate drought. How droughty it is? Yeah.
A couple of leaves are turning red on the maple, is that right?
Oh, sure. It's got to be. He's a little wet. Left of the fields because they have more water up there than they do over there.
Oh, no kidding?
Oh, yeah, I see two blocks, they block their field. What was Lord of the Sound Square the other day? Down there is a pretty rougher. Down in the rocks here, with only a little bit of water. Going around, looking for some deep.
Well, they say it's going to seem like fall this summer, this weekend, though.
Yeah, the temperature is still.
Yeah. We call that everybody needs a garage day. First day of snow, they're all in. I need a garage. I didn't think I'd get that far. I would have had some more highlighted for us, but I'm up to good neighbor policy, good neighbor standard. We can catch up on that on the next one. The TheraCraff, you guys ready to move on to the relocation? And I hope I'm pronouncing it right, TheraCraff.
So you want to do those first and then talk about the changes, proposed changes in the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, we can go over that tonight. We can get rid of this relocation first, then we can leave whenever. So originally the homeowners did not want to relocate. They thought that was in the best spot as possible. And I don't have the updated map, but I think you guys got them in your folder. We had the engineer do the setbacks from the water. What's the closest point to the water for that one?
Forty-four point six feet.
And that's over in here or something? Forty-four point six. Call it 45. The homeowner slash contractor, they thought five feet, moving at five foot back was reasonable. So you're at 45, no closer than 50 feet from the water. That is a tough site. If it was mine, I would be trying to move it back into there and do some sort of daylight. But again, at that point, you're talking a 10, 12 foot foundation back there or maybe even 14, 15, 16, depending on where you go. But it would just get great access for underneath. But that's if I wasn't thinking how much it's going to cost me either too. But I thought moving at five foot back, so we're at 44 six now?
Yep.
Yeah, call it 45. So no closer than 50 seems reasonable to me. And that's eaves, overhangs, drip edge. That's not the foundation, that's the house itself. And of course, years ago, people would have the cantilever decks and I'll try to navigate around that. So it's kind of clear that it's no closer than to the closest point of the structure. Well, since Dennis is usually our loudest one back there.
Well, I think you can go back farther than that.
That's why, that's why I didn't touch this one.
Well, I guess you'd all look at that one out there the other day. You'd have to put 10, 12 feet on the fly.
I did notice, and Chris pointed it out, how these stone walls were here and stuff like that. So yeah, I wouldn't, because going this way, you're still closer to the water over here. You really haven't achieved nothing. There was a hole over in here, but again, you're not getting any further back than, you know, dimensionally, you haven't really achieved a lot there.
You can go back to 10, 12 feet and put it back a little bit.
Yeah, those pine trees are right in this area here. Let's see if I've got some.
I was thinking the same thing. We'll look at it, but you can go back 10, 12 feet without really getting into that salt and fossil concrete erosion problems.
Yeah.
I guess my only issue is, at least in the past, we put them back as far as was reasonable.
That's, that's what's hard with this one because, I mean, there's plenty of room outside the 100 foot zone over here, back there, up there. But then they'd have that big hump to look through and to me, that's not really practical. But over time, I think we did 20, 25 of these last year. And when they come through our office, if we can get them outside of 100 foot, you guys will never even see them or side setback or something like that. So we're probably doing 50 a year. And over time, we're just getting them back from the water a little bit each time, trying to get them more conforming, more conforming. And you start to see that the development isn't right on the lake. Not to pick on lower mousen, but as you're at the foot of the lake and you look out, it's concrete everywhere's and there's really, over time, there's not a lot we'll ever do with that. It is what it is. It's development on the steep slopes.
So their septic system, they replacing that?
No, they've got a brand new one. And as we drove in the road, we drove in the road up here and we could look down and see the camp and the septic is up in here or it's in this road area. I think it's actually on somebody else's land. And that was put in in the mid 90s. So as long as they have a state approved system, which goes back to 1974, then the state's okay. We put a rule in an ordinance a couple of years ago because people were getting clever and they'd get a septic and put it in this year and then come in and right behind where the cottage is, and then they'd come in and say, hey, we want to rip our camp down, the septic's there, we can't move it back. So we've got a five year window that you guys will look back and say, yeah, just because you put that garage there, doesn't mean you're not relocating your camp. So just to keep it all honest, so they'll at least know if we're going to do it within a couple of years, let's look at the big picture. Let's move everything back and get it, get it so it is. Again, I think with this, if it's moved back, whatever the dimension is, they end up with a great spot. If it's right in here, they'll end up with a great spot in front. They'll end up with some construction. Now, if you guys say no closer than 50, 55, then the survey would draw that 50, 55 line on this and it can go anywhere's here, anywhere's up there, wherever it is. So you're really not focused on that one spot. Although in this situation here, I would assume, you know, they're building in this area here, once you guys give them the number. Now, whatever dimension you guys come up with, the first thing they can do is when they replace, I'm sure it's not going to have this jog or that jog. It's going to be something longer, a skinnier, maybe, you know, have some angles to it or something like that. When we relocate the structure, the state determines or has advised that decks are part of that and really should be off to the side. So we wouldn't be, usually they're not going to waste, you know, the deck in the front of that or something. It's off into the side area of it.
So to be very clear, Ken, so we all understand what we are doing is relocating the existing structure.
Yep.
What they build is up between them and you.
Yep, you're just setting no closer to the high water than, and then you guys fill in your number. And then, once we get up and we'll make Gavin sign the paperwork for now, but once we get established and we figure out who wants to, who you guys want your chair and your vice chair is and things like that, they'll get to sign some paperwork too. But we'll have a findings of fact that this is why it did not move back. There were power lines back there, steep slopes, extensive cutting of trees, which usually we've never looked at because you know, when they go to build that, those pine trees in the back are probably all going to disappear because of safety hazards. It's, I'm surprised they're in such good shape as they are, but.
Why would that hold for that building?
Yeah. It would have been nice, like Gavin was saying, bring the second one in, but that's not in as bad of a shape. But bring, bring the two both in and it's tough. I mean, this is a great spot right here, but really you haven't gained anything back from the water. You get rid of the two and put it into the one, but then you lose the parking. They have no parking to come down and deal with.
Well, I'll make a motion then. It's more closer than 55 feet.
And I would say if the applicant had an issue, they can always come back and talk to you guys and point out things that we haven't. It's hard for the homeowners. They're usually from away, Mass, Connecticut, New Jersey, wherever. Thursday's a tough night for them to come up and they're not used to all this. So usually they'll have a contractor involved too. The contractor couldn't make it tonight till after, I think he wanted 8:30, 9 o'clock and we're hoping to be done by then.
I would second the 55 feet.
Any other discussion? Motion made and seconded? Heron, none. Gavin will call for a vote.
Call for a vote. On paper.
Awesome passes, five to zero.
So you want to review the minutes?
Do we have minutes from last one?
Looks like you have.
Do we? Oh, hey, we do. Christine is on top of it.
So I guess I can take a minute, Gavin, if you have the minutes to put them over.
I think we talked about this a little last week. You go through and read the minutes and it'd be like, I didn't say that. You might not have meant that, but that's what you said. Christine is really good at putting in, and it's hard to do minutes. You really want to get the concept of the conversation without transcribing, otherwise it'll be, how many pages is it?
Just a page and a half.
Yeah.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
People have all different beliefs about minutes. Some, some people believe that the minutes just need to be the action.
Who was there? What the vote was, what the count was? Especially now where there's a video. The video's not the official minutes, but you can go back and watch that too.
So I guess we're just looking for a motion on the minutes and anyone?
I'll make a motion to move the minutes as we read of September 10th, 2010. I'll second.
Any changes of practice? All in paper?
Looking to see if I have those proposed changes.
Ken, with the, with the proposed changes that we did, we had the public hearings on it. I would assume we'd have to redo these, redo the public hearings after this length of time.
I usually reread the section of ordinance that says you need it 30 days prior to, but no more than 14 and just reread that. But I was thinking the same thing, that we'll probably have to have some new public hearings to be within that, unless it says it just has to be greater than 30 days before. And I think it may be worded as that. Just looking to see if I have the changes online. What's your first one on top, Gavin?
I got the timber harvesting standards, first one on top of mine.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty straightforward one where we're already working with the state to eliminate everything to do with timber harvesting in the zoning ordinance. We still have a few.
Thank you.
Few definitions and.
Things they didn't like?
Yes, some verbiage still in there that the DEP thought we should take out.
So when we're doing an ordinance change, we'll strike out what we're removing and we'll underline what we're adding. So it makes it clearer. Most times, depending if it's a ballot vote or town meeting vote, when the public's voting on it, it's the first time they've heard of it, first time, they've never even thought about it and they just start asking questions and it's like, these are the questions for the public here and not for the vote today. Once you're at town meeting, there's no changing it. You're voting on what you're voting, usually. There can be some amendments, but usually not very much. So the state didn't like that it was still, we still had something in the land use chat that talked about the forest management activity, including the silviculture. I think I'd have to get the dictionary out to be right on that. And get rid of the definition too. So they picked us up on that before they would adopt what we gave them. So that's an easy one.
Yeah, we're just still, still working to conform so that the state will assist us in severe enforcement.
Somebody will answer the phone when we call? So one, two, three, four. So we got five.
So if anybody has any questions about the specific things to go through, feel free to throw them out there. Just because you're going to work at a town meeting doesn't mean there's something we could change.
Overlooked.
Yeah, yeah, something there overlooked.
Before you go on, Gavin, if I could, the public hearing we did have will be on YouTube with anybody wanting to refresh themselves about what we'll set at that time and some questions and stuff that were brought about different things.
Yeah. So you're going to get rid of the definitions? You can just put it as permitted in all these zones?
It's, yeah, it'll be under all state guidelines there. So at the beginning of the ordinances, the map and that really the legend over here, we'll kind of break out that critical rural, that was the five acre zoning. And it's on the northern part of town as well too. And you can see the different commercials, commercial A, commercial B, commercial C, mixed use is the blue down here. This is all the rural zone and shoreline's all the, shoreline zoning map there with all the different buffers and things. What was your next one, Gavin?
The docks and other shoreline construction. Where we pretty much in a nutshell made it so that temporary docks are permitted and don't be reviewed from Ken. And.
Five 16, that one's coming up. We'll look at that next week. But on the backside is the strikeout and planning board talked about this maybe 20 years ago or so, you know, we started kicking this around and, you know, they wanted to know if I wanted to be the dock police. I'm like, absolutely not. But anything permanent or floating. Do you want to say permanent floating? Triggered basically was a conditional use for you guys. So any swim raft, the big thing now with the pink flamingos out there and they've got all types of slides and stuff, all that stuff, basically that's all floating. It would be conditional use, which by the time, we'd never be able to chase the stuff. 10% access from the shoreline undeveloped. So the state, the DEP, I'd say probably five, six, seven years ago, they were encouraging us to get rid of the temporary stuff and just look at the permanent stuff. they were encouraging us to get rid of the temporary stuff and just look at the permanent stuff. I know Shapley jumped onto that probably about five years ago. We just never had the time to follow, and it was a great... The board did a lot of workshops last year, and this was one of the issues they took down. Yeah, one of it, F is under, "In the strikeout, the facility shall be no larger than the dimension necessary to carry out the activity. Be constructed within the surrounding character of the area. Temporary docks or walls shall not be wider than six feet." Most of the docks you see, if they run horizontal or perpendicular with the shoreline, then that's an issue. A lot of them, they'll go out the six feet or whatever, and then they have the 12 by 12 sitting area out there, and just makes it tough.
And the other part that was blue, if I remember right, unless it's attached to the land. The town doesn't have authority on the water anyway. It goes to the property. They don't have the authority to enforce that law on the water itself unless it's attached to the property. Then it's a permanent fixture.
The tough ones we get into are those docks that raised, that pulled up from it. That's considered a permanent structure, so...
I think the whole theory of working on this was trying to clarify it so it's impossible because the way it exists is it has to hire a full-time person just to be a dock boss.
What's your next one, Gavin?
So before we move on, the intent is to eliminate being the dock police for the temporary stuff.
Correct.
But we still need some of that strike, strikes and these things you need for the permanent ones. Am I reading that?
No, you have to scale down.
Of course, they feel bad even for the permanent.
If it's a permanent one, they're going to come to you for a conditional use for it, and they'll never get a permit from the DEP on them. So...
And we'll send it to the DEP.
Yeah. If it's an existing permanent, then they usually maintain 50% of it each year so they can kind of keep what they've got. Which would be B. They get rid of the old I and the new B.
And I feel like there certainly is more discussion to be had about docks in the town. It's not like this is all the discussion that we used to have. It does seem like there's, we are ending up with a lot more floating structures than there used to have, and it is to be discussed, you know, during the wintertime, you know, and discuss changes to the zoning ordinance order. You know, what we think about X, Y, and Z and go over it then.
Because you guys will spend all this time moving all these houses back, moving all these houses back, moving all these houses, and then all you see is aluminum, stainless steel, and pink flamingos.
Yeah, you've got a 40 by 60 deck sitting out there in the water. It's attached to something, you know, to the ground with property that you can do something about it. But like I said, these floating things out there that are just so, you don't have the authority. That's one thing about these changes that you guys will see if you stick around. It's always a working document. There's always changes every year, and some things work, some things don't. You add this, you take this away, and it's been enough. Who's on the board is what direction you're going with all this stuff.
And we'll sit here and go through a simple word for an hour and then craft it up, and then all of a sudden, you know, get the ordinance passed, and then all of a sudden, something will come up and never thought of that. Huge loophole through it, or you're restricting something that you never thought about. Public hearing at least 30 days prior to the meeting of the governing body. Posted in three locations, two times in a paper. I think we've held it 30 days prior. Date of the first publication. And I think we talked about that a little bit with newspapers last time. It's getting harder and harder. We have to put it in the Portland Post-Herald to find a newspaper to get it in the cycle, but yet nobody needs it. So then we just throw it in the smart shopper so people will see it as well, too. This is something that needs to change at the state level because it's, you know, it's not become feasible. People just go to the website or something like that. That's where they get all their information from. What's your next one, Gavin?
The short-term rental units.
Oh.
Which we definitely had when we had the public hearing. Definitely most of the discussion was on the short-term rental units. Which we've had these things in the town for quite some time. I don't know how many potentially are inactive. We don't really have anything.
I'm going to Google Airbnb. I'll tell you how much it's going right now. I think we're T to 30 to 40. We've noticed every time we trip over that. So currently, it's not a permitted use, so anybody renting something short-term, it's a violation. It's not a use. So we wanted it to be a use. We get a lot of complaints from the neighbors that my neighbor rents it out and it's just out of control. There's 15 cars there. Nobody cares. It's just totally out of control. Fireworks, bonfires. And we get it from the renters as well, too. This thing's got mold in it. It's a death trap, and it's, you know... If it's a life safety issue, we'll get involved, but otherwise, we just try to, we just don't have the time to track it down. So our first step was, we need the rental units in town. It's a great way for the property owners to recoup some property tax money or let some run it as a business as well, too. They're not involved with it whatsoever. It's clearly a business, so... When do we come out? So it would be triggered if it's less than 60 days short-term. Otherwise, it's a rental unit. We're not too concerned about that. 60 days.
We're thinking people who do a short-term rental, the people who are renting the unit may not care so much about the habitat of it, you know, the waters. These are on the lakes, and maybe some of them rent it. They're like, "Oh, we want to make the best of the weekend. We're going to bring everybody we can, all the dogs and all vets."
A lot of land property owners that care about their house, they'll limit the amount of people, limit the amount of cars, and they police it very good themselves. And through discussion, some people wanted conforming lots, vegetation things. We looked at all types of different things. This, to push an ordinance through that we know may not pass at town meeting, you know, we just discuss it and come up with what we feel is the minimum regulation we would need to get it through. So B is looking at just one rental per property, application fee, dimension requirements.
Can I go back to A?
Yeah.
So the definition is up to 60 days at a time. Is there a limit annual? So I can rent something for two months essentially to somebody, and then a month later, can I rent to somebody for two months again?
I would think if it's less than rental, a league business rental for a duration of 60 days. Up to 60. So if they're renting it for 61 days, it's not a short-term rental. If you're renting it...
What I'm suggesting is you could rent, you could rent out your place, you know, assuming it's winter, right? You could rent out your place six times a year.
Rent it out four months as long as nobody stays here more than 60 days?
I would say if you're renting it for 61 days, we'd look at it as long-term rental, and it wouldn't go in to the same person.
Right. But I could rent it to somebody else for another 60 days.
If it's less than 60 days, then it would fall into this per year.
Basically, camp rentals.
A lot of it.
Yeah, weekend rentals, because I mean, there's a, for a few weekends in the summer, so...
Right. I just, I don't think it's necessarily clear if there's a limit on, other than for the, you know, 60-day max. So, but I...
Per, 60 days per rent. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
What we're talking about now, when you talk to the fire chief, for example, nationally, everything for them is safety. At the public hearing, some of the stuff that we were talking about, that was probably the biggest controversy, was these rentals for the weekend, for a week, or two weeks. That's only due to most people. And I would love to say that 90% of this is all on the lakes. And these people have been doing it for years and years and years. And then you look at the safety aspect of it. Some of the overlap, especially, they really don't need much of a safety designs today. And to require certain safety things like a fire extinguisher, 911 stuff and all that, that was a beginning goal and given pattern of the fire chief. And but myself personally, I thought you got an outlaw pushback. So...
On the savings?
That'll come up.
But we know the size of the windows.
Yeah, number five.
And we wanted to keep it, so there was a clear list, so somebody didn't get in and start looking at the geometry of the stairs, the antrails, guardrails, you know, the size of the roof rafters. We really just tried to name it, limit it right down. D, property ownership, certificate of insurance. We wanted to make sure that they had insurance to call it a short-term rental. They just weren't under the table there. And I'd say if you rented to the same people every week, and it's your brother-in-law, and it's just, you know, it's going to be under the radar, you know, we'll never be able to track a lot of that. We wanted to, and a lot of this stuff is stuff I've seen in some of the rentals I've got. There's a nice little laminated thing on the wall. It tells you your address, the telephone number, the property owner. There's usually an agent for that, something like that, right there, right on the wall. Local fire department number, pizza place, whatever. You've got all that information right there because these people don't know. I drove by the schoolhouse, took a right, two lefts, and it's by the big tree. Usually 911 or a cellphone, they'd be able to triangulate you and at least maybe get your clothes. Somebody had to be within an hour, so if we're getting... And our big thing is the rental, give it to your butters. Give them that information. This is my caretaker. You've got a problem, call him first. Don't call the town. Don't call the police. Fire extinguisher, number four, some sort of an egress window, number five. They weren't happy about that one. Smoke detector and carbon dioxide detectors.
Surprising the number of complaints we got about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just definitely one to be hardwired.
Yeah, which is how the building code is written. They are coming up with a lot better 10-year batteries that are Wi-Fi or wirelessly communicate with each other. But the discussion we've had with a lot of the manufacturer, these camps are zero degrees for several months in the winter. How long will that 10-year battery last? And they won't tell us. You take the smoke detector home, keep it at home, and come back and bring them up next year. Number seven was the state-approved septic system. That one really was a big one.
So they need a permit and subject to manual inspection. I mean, you're getting out the inspector to know if they have these items.
I would think once you're in and you've got it and it's all checked off, then we're good on that. Fire department was going to take the lead on a lot of it because they were going to do the burn permit they need every year for the campfire and stuff like that. And we just want to keep a simple little checklist for them as well, too. And it's good for them to understand, like the place we were out to on Saturday. A lot of people may not have visualized how to get to something like that, but if they're out there for the campfire permit, check these things out, and it gives the duty crew at the fire department a realization. Don't go in this way. Go in this way.
They just do away with getting permits through the fire station. Now they're going to do it through the...
Online, yeah.
But you can still have the fire department involved with this, which we did. We had the fire marshal with me was at a workshop, the fire chief, and they thought it was pretty good. And they were thinking a little different, and these rentals either go through a realtor or people are just doing it on their own. And I understand doing that, and they've been doing it forever, but I don't, I didn't have that much confidence that this whole thing, you know, we could make it through the town meeting. That part, I really didn't know. It was bad to get out of the public hearing.
But it does make good sense because we want to make these things permitted uses right now. They're kind of like...
So it's double-edged sword. Now it's a violation.
Yeah.
And none of this matters until somebody gets hurt. There's an issue, somebody falls down, somebody can't find this, they blow the place up, and they had no insurance, and then they're going to drag out our videos and all types of things.
I can get the guy upstairs bedding because they can't get out of the car.
Yeah, and you see, you always see, where was the one? Carbon oxide's a big one. The water heaters that are in the closet, in the bathroom. It's the old gas water heater with the hood on it and stuff like that. You see those in a lot of the camps.
In the town hall meeting, will they amend it? Do they amend it?
You can amend it to public hearings.
Not at the town hall.
Not at the town meetings. There's a fine mite. You can change it a little, but you can't change the substance of it, and... Hans Pond, 10th Street, Wilson, Cozy Cottage, Loon Pond. Let's see what that is.
What is the arrows on that?
I think that was just defining some of the stuff that changed throughout the...
Throughout our process. Because we didn't, initially, number three, we had that owner of each would be within 20 minutes of the property, and then we changed it to one hour. You can see more reasonable. And I think all the arrows pointed to, and I think the duration of up to 60 days was changed from another number of days.
Yeah. Those are some changes we made through after the public hearing, I think, or during the public hearing from the public input. And it's hard because most of these people on the waterfront that rent these aren't residents, so they weren't, they won't be allowed to vote at it, but they were allowed to speak at the public hearing. What's your next one?
Storage buildings. Which is kind of another thing we just typically have in, we're not at all.
A lot of times, we'll look at the ordinance and say, "This is similar to a conditional use," and you start connecting dots to try to justify allowing some of these. But we get a lot of, again, the shorefront people with these little tiny places, they have no room to store things. So this is really looking at the larger storage buildings. It'd be a 5,000-square-foot unit. And conditional use, not allowed in village, critical rural, and the shoreline, three in the shoreline. So everything else would be allowed through conditional use through you guys. And it's tough. Once you change something, then you got to change a bunch of things underneath once you're changing some of the numbers. Why don't we put it there? I'm all set if you need to take on.
That goes back into that, hopefully, our plan to be aware of those so that you don't pick up on some of that stuff. If we make changes, we know we have to change it all through the whole thing.
Good neighbor policy was the last one. When that was brought in, and I'd have to look to see when that actually came in. The intent was really commercial development, and good, Steve, this is expected, underlined. So we tried to, once it got implemented, we were getting calls about the neighbors' lights and all types of things. So I added the word "development," and that didn't really... and that didn't really make enough sense, that it's really commercial development. Once we get into the good neighbor policy next week, a lot of it may make a little bit more sense as far as loading docks and buffers and things like that.
But nothing really changed within that one word.
Yeah.
Moving into a different section.
Yeah, bringing it into the site plan review. And originally, we were thinking standalone ordinance, and make the site plan regs a standalone, too, but, um-
It was definitely one discussion within the board about this change. You know, it's called the good neighbor policy. It's not called the good commercial development neighbor policy. You know, some of these things are really hard to determine, too, your neighbors.
And some of it's very conflicting.
Right.
With the two different.
With the odor section? A level one or a level five odor?
I guess my phone, I'm sorry to say, there's a big difference between commercial neighbor, residential neighbor. Example would be, many years ago, when I worked in an apple orchard, I would be spraying it to three o'clock in the morning. Then somebody would buy a piece of property next to the orchard, and build the house twenty-five feet from the orchard, and then complain because the spray is making some noise, um, four o'clock in the morning.
They wouldn't complain about the chemicals you were using, though, back then?
Well, years ago, there was one guy who brought his baby in on the back. Only to get one in the back.
As you were spraying?
He walked half a mile from his house, and walked up to me, and tried to shut the spray off. And he's complaining that the spray was gonna get down to his house and kill his baby. So, but kind of like, eating the whole breakfast, bringing his baby into the orchard at five o'clock in the morning. But, I mean, I'm just saying, it's a big difference. And I think it needs to be separated out somehow.
Well, this is definitely one that, you know, should think about when we are gonna be talking about it next time.
Yeah, we'll come up on the ordinance review.
Yeah, yeah.
So, no meeting next week. You guys can have a week off. And then we'll jump into it on the first, which is the first Thursday of the month in October. Won't be long, we'll be changing our clocks.
Are we gonna talk about the new bathroom at the west shore?
Oh, I did, I'm glad you're paying attention. Let me go grab that.
I'll get it right here.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a big one.
I'll just tell them to do it.
I think they have the final.
In the last year and a half, what we've, what we've been doing is, we normally meet the first and third Thursdays, and what we've been doing the other odd weeks is having a workshop with members to try to go through some of these stuff and changes, and have the debates and the conversations and all that. And then when we get everything, kind of straightened out, we bring it to a board meeting, and then let the board have the discussion. But as you can see during these meetings, you don't need to verify, trying to go through and get appropriate additions and additions. Now, I could be here till two o'clock in the morning. But again, I have a hundred hours, waiting to change the document tonight, you know, for the workshops and stuff. It's been huge. My board of directors, they're gonna have to do it.
It, it's tough, because you're dealing with property rights, you're dealing with the butters' rights. Some of the last couple of shootings in New Hampshire, there was a couple of major ones. It was subdivision issues sparked the whole thing. Boy, the contract would have been sad if I told them we forgot them. Yeah, of course, at this time of year, everyone's trying to get concrete in the ground and- So originally, they were telling us this was a hundred feet outside the shoreline zone. So another reason you guys do relocations, if there's a foundation proposed that is not within, underneath the structure, it goes outside from the structure, which would be additions. And again, anything as a structure for a foundation, sauna tubes. Get a lot of those.
I assume they already have a path?
Yeah. I get excited, I heard the bell ring early, so. Yeah, which I won't get back on the Wi-Fi.
Did everybody get a copy of the comprehensive plan?
Yep.
Probably-
I'll not let you leave that.
Maybe take some comments on that sometime in the next month. People have a chance to look over the comprehensive plan. And the thing does need to be updated. It's due for updating. Um, the process for updating it is, we have to come up with a committee of sorts. The selectmen are supposed to help create the committee. I kind of think it would be nice to maybe take someone from some of these, you know, one person from some of the other committees we have existing, one person from the planning board, one person from the rectory, somebody from the final, second thing. Get them all together to help update the comprehensive plan. By the way, you know-
That all that didn't mean, uh, Gavin last year, that I remember the planning hall, the things that were, the planning board responsible for this plan. We can't change it, but we did.
Right, in the back of the conference, the planning board says what the duties of the different committees are, how the selectmen are supposed to, you know, work with the other committees, what the planning board is supposed to do to stay in check of the comprehensive plan, that kind of thing. And, yeah, we, we did look at it, but it's still, it's- It's getting, um, sort of outdated to the point where people are kind of overlooking it. Whereas it's still the active document we're supposed to be using, but it's kind of starting to get dismissed. So we do have to, you know, I don't think the planning board necessarily has to be the ones who rewrite the comprehensive plan, but, um- Yeah, anybody who's interested.
There was a subcommittee at town meeting last time that got appointed, and it was serious enough, they actually had a budget, too.
I'm in the planning board, been trying to get the slum to move on this, but over the year.
Yeah.
And we just can't. See the game traction.
Thank you. When you ask, things go away. When you, you know, send a memo from them to remind them, and just get something on the agenda for them.
And the problem is with it, it is a problem. The thing with this comprehensive plan, that is what all our regulations, all instances of baseball, like state law, it has to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan, everything we do. And if it's not, then we do something. If it went to court, they could very easily say it's, you know, against your comprehensive plan. And if it's shown, you're wrong, if they're right. Stage very clear on that. Every town has to help.
So there's a conflict between the ordinance and the plan, and the plan rules?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Put this in violation. The ordinance is in violation. Then the whole plan is the official document of the operation, huh? I first developed that when the state said they had to do it. I mean, I don't know. A lot of torn cash and facilities, one of the main people doing that. And I can't imagine how many hundreds and hundreds, maybe thousands of hours they spent developing that. But back then, they had, the state would also have agencies helping there. And now those, I don't believe those agencies, they may exist, but I don't know if there's anybody working on that.
They're working from home.
They're working from home.
Yeah.
But they don't get back to you. There's a lot of stuff, there's no help anymore from the state that they used to be.
Funding.
Yeah, it's all funding.
So this is their primary structure right here. This is the garage, they get a little accessory unit up in the garage, too, as well. They're looking at doing a bathroom on this corner here, which I think my closest point may have been from over here. Oh, that's a hundred. Right into the seventy-three.
That's a building, heck, yeah.
That right there? Yep, that's the house.
Oh, I'm kidding, when I realized that I couldn't see anything.
It's actually, on this side of the, the building is where they're trying to get it. Oops, that's not the one I want. That's looking at from the water, be the opposite side. I don't have a good photo from over in there. So, to relocate the house for an addition, small addition, to me, doesn't seem reasonable. They've got a foundation underneath it. I think what the real, the reason the state put the, in there, it would be somebody doing a massive addition around some tiny, tiny little camp and circumventing the relocation process, because they didn't rip down the old camp or do a foundation underneath it. They're showing the- Eighty-two feet, no closer than eighty-two feet, and they're, they meet their side setback.
Why can't they put the, just on the backside again?
As this slopes down through here, it makes it, and the roof comes down as well there. That was the, the better spot to do it. Again, eighty-two seemed reasonable to me.
Which corner is it on?
Uh, the addition, going right in there. Let me pull up that water photo again. Yeah, so if it's on the back, you'd have to get into valleys and all types, and you've got this vegetation, stairways up and stuff, so. And it was eight by twelve. So it wasn't a major thing, but it still just needed a vote through you guys. Which Dennis seems to be a motion maker.
So they haven't used any of the thirty percent, or they, or this?
No, they, they enclosed this porch with a screened porch, and that didn't meet the definition for the floor area was existing, and it didn't create any volume. And so this would be part of the thirty percent. Six point six percent. Leaving a balance of twenty-three point four.
So there's no, there's no additions or expansion? They just replaced that deck with a porch, or?
Left the existing deck and built a roof over it. Screened all sides, so it didn't create any volume. So they haven't used any yet. Lot coverage is at seventeen point eight-six. So they're good on their lot coverage, good on their thirty percent, meet the side setback. Fairly small bathroom addition.
No septic issues?
No. Uh, the septic, we, we only usually look at if it's a bedroom expansion, unless it's a demo and rebuild.
But it's a fairly new septic.
At twenty years old.
Are we, we're looking at the screen porch right now?
No, the screen porch isn't in this photo. This is my assessing photo. Yeah. 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 You think Dennis is fuzzy.
Well, it doesn't look like a screen porch.
No. That's what they replaced, was this metal thing here with a, with a permanent structure.
Long since the last time you could see, we could see where it was being done, with your glasses. Remember, you shouldn't mind them when I have to talk.
Oh, you had them. So it'd be an eight by twelve addition, no closer than eighty-two feet from the high water.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the best practical location application of the stock, Landbury nine ninety-eight, West Good Drive, about one twenty-four lot. Sixteen, the building, eight by twelve bathroom addition on the existing house, eighty-two feet from the water. No closer than eighty-two feet from the water. And we'll then allow the thirty percent expansion, allow, I don't know, we need to that.
Well, I think it's good to note that they are using part of their permits.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
But they are eligible to do this again with the remainder of the thirty percent.
Yep, and when that permits go out, it has the balance that's on there.
And that does look like they're gonna have to take down a couple trees to do the-
Yeah. We'd real, we normally would go towards this side for the revegetation plan, if they can't get it back there. They, depends on the grids, there's a grid system that you use for the twenty-five by twenty-fives. Depends which grid it in, they may end up replanting there. They may have actually enough points in that grid.
I think it would be nice if they replanted closer to the water than-
Usually, that's where we try to go to, is, is on the stormwater side. Dennis, your motion's gonna die for lack of a second.
I'll say that.
And it was so good. Chris saved ya. Now Gavin will call for his vote.
Any other conditions anybody would think of? I'd like to put something in there about the vegetation.
Yep, with standard pervia that we add to any relocation.
Yeah, anything else?
York County water and soil, or somebody equivalent to that, to do a vegetation stormwater plan.
You said they're good with their twenty percent of impervia.
On the lot coverage.
It looks kind of tight, I mean, if they-
It does. Quite often-
Heave driveway.
Yeah, quite often, they'll go for some barren area and eight by twelve. So, I mean, ninety-six square feet, that's pretty easy to revegetate something over here and get the balance they need over there.
Right, but saying they were open to twenty percent now.
Right.
It wouldn't hurt to ask them to try and conform with the twenty percent. You said they were under, right?
That was the different one we were talking about.
Well, I mean, you look at that lot, just look at the screen.
That was the thirty percent we were talking about.
More than twenty percent of the water, still roof or driveway on it.
Twenty-three point four. No, that was thirty percent.
Wouldn't, when they did the, the plan, Gavin, for re-vegetation, wouldn't the first, if it does that plan, put in that other area, maybe, or whatever? I mean, they're a professional person, then they're gonna tell them what they have to do.
Seventeen point eight-six.
Is what they're having now? I know, that doesn't-
So a lot of things, if it's skeptical for us with a small amount of that, we'll ask for the ninety-six square feet of revenge.
Yeah, that's one, I think that's more reasonable. Now, I think the rest of the plan will do that. I would think the rest of the plan would do that.
When we get to the stormwater plan.
Yeah.
I don't know, would you, do they have a certified block plan?
No. Quite often, what I'll do when it's close, and I think they're stretching it, I'll ask for a certified 20% calc.
Yeah.
After the construction's done. Or at that point, they're like, yeah, revegetate 96 square feet. It's going to be much cheaper than hiring a surveyor and engineer.
I would change the motion to that Gavin.
I can just add it to my building permit condition.
We can just start conditioning the motion.
That's 36 there. He's pretty close. Was that a condition you were adding? Certified 20% calc or revegetate that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see vegetation added. To, I mean, it looks like there's some, some areas by the garage that could, you could...
Up in this area.
Yeah. And to the left of the driveway, um... That could be attended to, to help with that, without having to take out any pervs.
Yeah.
Work on what's, you know, improve vegetation on what is vegetated now.
And usually, when you talk with a property owner, this guy does a lot of permitting and stuff through us. You, once you explain stormwater quality affecting the lake quality, which is going to affect the value of his house, then there... It's more important to them. They realize it's more important to them to make sure the water quality is as clean as practical when it leaves this property into the lake than it would be to us.
I think that's the most reasonable condition. So we need a new motion with condition?
We'll just put it, that's part of the discussion to add to it. And that's fairly standard that we'll, we'll do in our office anyways. Add the, um, 20% verification by somebody. Or in this case, myself, I'd revegetate 96 square feet. It'd be a lot cheaper than having an engineer come out and do my calculations for me. Quite often, what they'll also do is drip line trenches, putting crushed stone around the perimeter of this, so the stormwater off the roof. And that's, that's a huge roof too. Uh, mitigates down through the ground. I think he did that on the last time we, we had a project out there. He did the stormwater mitigation, um, parts.
Also, well, huh?
This is a night out for Dennis, so he'll stay all night. Don't, is somebody...
And then come to the 70, get up in the morning, go to school.
Oh, that's right, I got to be in Portland in the morning.
They have to wear their mask all day.
Yeah, but they trade at lunchtime, at cafeteria, all the kids switch masks.
And they don't have to wear it while they're eating.
Well, we know how the virus will get spread. Are you ready for a vote?
I think so, as long as we're pretty clear on the...
Lot coverage? Yep. We'll make sure we get a veg plan from a qualified individual and certified 20% calc or equal.
All right. All in favor?
Now that's all.
I know, it's looking on my...
Five to nothing.
Yeah.
Awesome. Now we're ready for a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Dennis. All in favor? Make it official.